Dear Lord, we come before you and we ask for your guidance and wisdom as we discuss the county's business. Pray that you take care of those that are not feeling well on our board and in our county. Pray that you give us wisdom as we go about this evening's events. In your name we pray, amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, first thing on agenda is the consent agenda. We will be tonight, I'll be pulling item five and six, I'll be talking about what they are, but I would ask that we would pull them and allow our PIO to come up and address those commendations and we're also waiting on some people to be recognized. Item three of the consent agenda is approval to contract the Rising Sun Incorporated to provide regional waterline extension for Lick Run. The contract will provide the construction of a waterline extension from the intersection of Route 3 and Andor Drive to Fire Station Number Five to be located at 6204 Plank Road. Item four is acceptance of the Bridges Grant Program awarded for July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. The Bridges to the Future Project is an inter-agency project between Spotsylvania Department of Social Services and Spotsylvania County Schools. There's no local match requirement for this. Item five is the, will be the commendation and recognition of Timothy Alsfeld. We'll talk more about that when the PIO comes up. Item six is commendation and recognition of Petty Officer Second Class David Gentry. Item seven is request to submit a grant application for the continuation of 2015-16 School Resource Officer Incentive Program. The Sheriff's Office requests a continuation for funding for the second year for the SRO located at Cortland Elementary School. If approved, the grant application would request $33,225 in state funds. The grant does not require a minimum local cash match as identified in the 2014-2016 composite index of local ability to pay. Spotsylvania County's rate is 33.55 percent. Item eight is SBA Towers LLC Memorandum of Lease Approval for Mine Road Tower. At the request of SBA Towers, they would like to have this memorandum, excuse me, this memorandum of lease recorded to be put on public on notice that on 2007 Mine Road Tower lease has been renewed and is still in existence. There may be some confusion in the name changing because of the lease. Item nine is Virginia Dry Hydrant Grant Application for Chancellor West. The dry hydrants allow for years of simple operation with a minimum of maintenance costs. The grant program will cover the cost associated with a standard installation of a dry hydrant. There are no local match requirements. Frim would like to submit one application under this program for the installation of the dry hydrant at Chancellor West. Item 10 is the 2015 appropriation. This is the county cortical budget transfer from the debt service to cover needs of special education students. The school board is requesting transfer from the debt service category into attendance and health and instruction categories. Be $250,000 for attendance and health and $205,000 in instruction. It's to cover the needs of the special education students and this was money from debt service savings. And that's all the items to be voted on on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Any items other than five and six that need to be removed? Seeing none, is there a motion?
To approve.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven yes. Mr. Chairman, at this time I invite Kathy Smith, our Public Information Officer, to come up and talk about item five and we would take a vote on that and then separately we'll deal with item six.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. The first commendation before the Board this evening is in recognition of Timothy Alsfeld, who is a resident of the Livingston District and is a van driver with the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board. And if I may read the commendation, please. Whereas Timothy, Tim Alsfeld, resides in the Livingston District of Spotsylvania County and has been a van driver for the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board. Specialized transportation program for 13 years, transporting individuals with intellectual disabilities and mental health challenges from home to day support programs. And whereas Mr. Alsfeld recently represented RACSB in state level competition sponsored by the Community Transportation Association of Virginia in April. And whereas the competition included 38 participants in this division, with drivers being judged on three components: a written test wheelchair securement and an 11-part obstacle course which tested their decision-making skills and precision. And whereas Mr. Alsfeld took first place in the body-on-chassis division of the 2015 Virginia Paratransit Driving Rodeo Competition. And whereas further, Mr. Alsfeld also finished in first place in the left-turn individual obstacle as well as the wheelchair securement components. And he will represent the Commonwealth as the Virginia State Paratransit Rodeo Champion at the 2015 National Rodeo to be held in Tampa, Florida on May 30, '31. And whereas the Board desires to bring to the attention of county citizens these professional successes of Mr. Alsfeld, who demonstrates that serving individuals and exercising care in patients are his priorities in his position. Now therefore, the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors commends Timothy Alsfeld for his work professionalism and state-level competition accomplishments and wishes him continued success as he competes on behalf of the Commonwealth in Florida.
Thank you.
Is he here?
I'm not certain.
Okay.
Mr. Alsfeld?
All right. What we would like, if the Board would take a vote first and then we'll convene to the bottom and have a photo op.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very proud to have a gentleman like this in my district and I would move that we approve this commendation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Ms. Barnes says we have another commendation. Did you want to wait and do, get the board down for both at the same time or, you know, one after the other?
We could do that if you like, okay. Go ahead and read the second one and then we'll do one photo op, then the next one.
Thank you, sir. The second commendation is in recognition of Petty Officer Second Class David Gentry. And I would like to read that to you too. It's very self-explanatory of his accomplishments. Whereas Petty Officer Second Class David Gentry is from Spotsylvania County attending school and being involved in our community. And whereas he graduated from Cortland High School in 2000, having participated in various school activities including being varsity football team captain and receiving all-area, region, and honorable mention all-state at the defensive end position. And whereas Petty Officer Second Class David Gentry is assigned to the Guided Missile Cruiser USS Chancellorsville Coast Guard Class 62, also in May 2013, representing the USS Chancellorsville on location in Spotsylvania here at the 150th anniversary of the Battle of Chancellorsville. And whereas, while conducting training off the coast of Point Mugo, California on November 16, 2013, an aerial BQM-74 target struck the USS Chancellorsville on the port side, leaving a three-foot hole and slightly injuring two sailors. And whereas, as cited by the commanding officer at the time of the drone incident, the sailors aboard the ship were commended for their heroism, for saving the ship, for saving lives, and for taking the actions they took quickly and putting their training to use. And whereas, on March 19th, 2015, in San Diego, California, Petty Officer Second Class Gentry was awarded the Navy and Marine Corps Medal for Heroism, the highest non-combat medal for his heroism and bravery in combating the fire in the aftermath of the rogue drone strike on the ship that occurred on November 16th in 2013. Now therefore, the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors commands Petty Officer Second Class David Gentry for his proven bravery and valor and wishes him continued success as he helps prepare the USS Chancellorsville to join the U.S. Forward Deploy Naval Forces in Yokosuka, Japan, as part of the U.S. Navy's long-range plan to send the most advanced and capable units to the Asia-Pacific region later this summer.
Thank you. Motion from the Board? Don't move. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Mr. Chair, Petty Officer Second Class David Gentry knows about this and we've talked by email and he's unable to be here, however, he is well represented this evening by his
Next item on agenda is public presentation. At this time, we allow the public to talk about anything that's not scheduled as a public hearing tonight on the agenda. So, Amy, has anybody signed up to speak at the six o'clock presentations? Amy?
There's one citizen signed up to speak. It's Nora Eldridge.
Hi, my name is Nora Eldridge. I live at 10,003 Morgate Avenue, apartment 304 in Spotsylvania, Virginia, 22553. On Sunday, April 12th, I was driving northbound on Route 1 and I came to the Yield intersection on Lafayette Boulevard in Route 1. Went through the Yield, did everything I was supposed to, gave it a second look to make sure I wasn't pulling into two lanes of traffic. The guy behind me in a Silverado decided to not be as cautious and wound up rear-ending me. So my point is that intersection may have served a purpose 30, 35 years ago, but with the amount of traffic in the area and how fast people drive, that needs to be replaced. My recommendation to the Board and to VDOT would be to take out that Yield, put in a right-hand turn lane with an appropriate light with a, an arrow, a green arrow to turn right, and no right on red at all, or else people are just going to do the same thing. They're just going to fly up there, give it a quick glance, see that they have a right on red, and you're going to have more accidents. I was lucky I wasn't killed. My car was totaled, but luckily I was not, you know. So thank you for letting me speak.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak.
Anybody here who has not signed up or wishes to speak about an item that is not a public hearing? Wish to speak? Seeing nobody arise, we'll move along.
Mr. Chairman, our first public hearing tonight is R14-0009 International Development and Virginia LLC. And Mr. Hughes is here to lead us in that discussion.
Have the floor computer, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'd say this is a request of International Development, R14-009, to rezone property on Jefferson Davis Highway. Before I start, though, I just want to state that the applicant amended their proffer statement yesterday and you have before you the redlined version of that. There was just one minor change. They reduced the number of units before they would commence to 25,000 square feet of commercial space to 751 from 1,001. So I just wanted to point that out before we get started. As stated, this is a request of International Development to rezone 214 acres from Industrial One to MU5 for the development of a mixed-use project that includes a mix of residential home types, to include townhomes, condominiums, apartments, healthcare-related units, and 298,000 square feet of commercial space. The project is located on the west side of Interstate 95 and on the east side of U.S. Route 1, adjacent and south of the Cosners Corner Development. For reference, this slide shows Lee's Park, the Cosners Corner, the Spotsylvania Regional Medical Center, and the Lancaster Gate subdivision. The subject parcel is outlined in red and has approximately 1,500 feet of frontage along Route 1. The zoning map of the area notes that the light industrial and commercial zoning are the predominant zonings in the area on the west side of Route 1 and to the north of the subject property are, the predominant zoning is Commercial 3 with a small area of Industrial 1 kind of highlighted there. To the south of the subject parcel, the zoning is Industrial 1 and across I-95 in the deeper yellow is I-2. This is a page from the applicant's GDP. It depicts the street layout, the land bays, and the open space. The project is divided into nine land bays. Land Bay A, which is here on the northern portion of the property, is for residential healthcare-related units and 27,000 square feet of commercial space with one acre of open space. The land bay will be accessed via Route 1 from a right-in, right-out and also be an inner, internal road there that will be, also serve as an interparcial connector to Cosners Corner. Land Bay B, to the north in the yellow, is 22 acres slated for 450 multifamily units with six acres of open space, accessed also via the internal road access and also the interparcial connector road to Cosners Corner. And that land bay with those residential units would have a 2,000-square-foot clubhouse with a pool and multipurpose courts. Land Bay C, in the green, is the most environmentally sensitive area of the project. It is 51 acres of open space and is designated as open space for passive recreation, which includes walking, biking, hiking. And the open space can be accessed from land bays B, D, E, and also F. Land Bay D, to the north here, or to the east, is 12 acres and will have 245 multifamily units with four acres of open space, accessed also via an internal network from Land Bay F in this general area right here. Land Bay E is 28 acres, is slated for 271,000 square feet of commercial uses with some second-floor offices, and this serves as the main entrance to the project here on Route 1. This main entrance is a four-lane divided boulevard entrance that extends all the way to the east area near the parcel's boundary with Interstate 95. The land bay has several open spaces within it as well as commercial buildings that will front on the streets and the development of this ultimately will be dictated by the MU ordinance. Land Bay F is 42 acres and is slated for 683 condominiums and townhomes with 10 acres of open space with a network of streets linked to the main boulevard. Land bays F and G and H will also be served with a 2,000-square-foot clubhouse and pool that will be constructed when the 75th percent of the units are constructed in F, G, and H. And at minimum, each of those land bays will have a tot lot. Land Bay G is 40 acres that will have 402 townhomes with 10 acres of open space. Land Bay H in the blue is 11 acres and will have 105 townhome units with two acres of open space. And Land Bay I, this green area here, is 25 acres dedicated to the county for public use. Those uses include transportation, utility, education, and an animal shelter. The GDP, or this page of the GDP also depicts the potential relocation of Telegraph Road from this general design right here. This area would be vacated through the normal vacation process, not as a part of this rezoning. And Telegraph Road would be rerouted through the project and access Route 1 via the signalized, future signalized intersection there. The proffers for this project include limiting the residential units to 2,270, the mix of residential types of I have described, and a minimum of 29, 298,000 square feet of commercial space as permitted in the MU5 zoning. Proffers note phasing for the project that consists of at least 25,000 square feet of commercial space prior to the issuance of the 751st Residential Unit Certificate of OTC, the preservation of 51 acres of open space. The applicant is also proffered to extend the 16-inch waterline along the frontage of the property and make a contribution to the animal shelter, around over a million dollars. Transportation and proffers include the dedication of 25 acres in Land Bay AI, as noted, for future public uses. This dedication also makes available land to construct a possible bridge across Interstate 95 with some future purpose, some point in the future. The proffers also include the relocation of old Telegraph Road, an interparcial connection to Cosners Corner, the dedication of right-of-way along Route 1 with four frontage improvements on Route 1, the installation of a traffic signal at the main entrance within 18 months of meeting warrants and gaining approval from VDOT, and the construction of an additional lane around, along Route 1, allow the ultimate build-out of six lanes on Route 1 along its frontage. Proffers also include the construction of the four-lane boulevard to the eastern property to allow potential bridge crossing of 95. And the triggers for that construction are either 220,000 square feet of commercial space or completion of 1,500 residential units. The applicant's cash proffers, as noted on the screen, and there are no byright units on the property as it is in I-1. The cash per unit to be paid is offset the transportation network, impacts the transportation network or any other capital improvement projects as designated by the Board of Supervisors. Proffers include a million-dollar transportation fund and this million dollars is to be paid with the issuance of the first-approved site plan for the project. There's also a $100,000 cash contribution for fire and rescue to offset impacts to the healthcare-related units and the total cash contribution from the project would be $7 million. This slide indicates the potential capital facilities impacts. It notes the population and the fire and rescue stations, four and eight, which would serve this project. When the new station comes along, it would also provide some relief to these stations as well. The project is projected to have 583 schoolchildren. There would be 3,931 new citizens. Slide also shows the potential impact on capital facilities in accordance with the current proffer guidelines. In this calculation, staff did not give credit towards the proffer calculation for several in-kind items noted in the proffer statement, although staff does acknowledge that those in-kind improvements are of value, but they did not get credit because they are not directly related to the public facilities categories in accordance with the policy. These items include the $549,000 waterline extension, the transit stop improvements at $100,000, and the frontage improvements at 2.1 million. The table does include credits for the 25 acres of land dedication at $13 million, the 1.5 million for trails, and the $7 million cash contribution. The applicant's credit towards the policy amount of $28,571 is $24,473 and there's a deficit there of some $4 million. This slide represents the economic impact from the one-time construction infusions of the project and you can see that would be $435 million. That's a one-time infusion to the county's economy as the project is in the construction. Fiscal impact analysis. The applicant's fiscal impact analysis reflected that the project would be fiscally positive by $729,000 annually at build-out. Staff evaluated the project using our model and it resulted in a 1.6 million impact at build-out. And the difference there is that staff included the salaries from the citizens in the calculation whereas the applicant's model did not. But in either event, they both trend positive. Transportation items. If approved, as presented, the project would generate 17,000 new vehicles per day. There are current intersections operating at a level service of D under the bill conditions. There are three intersections that would fail and there would be increased queuing at several intersections along Spotsylvania Parkway. Intersections that would have issues would be the Route 1 and southbound off-ramp at 95, South Point Parkway at Route 1, and Spotsylvania Avenue at Route 1. Improvements that are proposed for Exit 126 would provide some relief for those impacts in the future. Findings relative to the case. On balance, the project is consistent with the comp plan. The project is one component of a larger mixed-use area as identified in the comp plan along Interstate 95. And by providing the ability to have a bridge to connect the larger mixed-use areas, it provides future opportunities for transportation routes east and west, south of Route 17, which is identified in the comp plan right now. The project proposes a mix of housing types. The project integrates recreational amenities. Project design accommodates and is sensitive to environmental features. In accordance with the capital facilities and proffer policy, the project does not fully mitigate its impact, but using a more conservative fiscal analysis provided, the project is expected to have a positive fiscal impact. And the proffers commit to 25,000 square feet of non-residential construction prior to the 751st residential unit in the project. Project will have impacts on the network, transportation network as I noted. It will have an impact on schools absent of any adjustments in the attendance zones and the proposal is consistent with the current development patterns along Route 1. The addition of housing in the corridor would provide economic benefits to the existing and proposed commercial uses in the corridor. Staff recommendation, the project meets the goals of the comprehensive plan for mixed-use project. The proposed land use are consistent and complement the existing development patterns along Route 1. From a land use perspective, staff does support the application. However, there are concerns relative to the transportation network and the levels of service from the public facilities policy. And I should note, those transportation concerns are relative to the larger network. I mean, the applicant is doing a fair number of improvements at their project that are significant and provide some relief, but the project would have impacts, as I noted, on the Route 1 and Route 17 corridor. I mean, those are larger transportation issues in the county is looking at alternatives and some relief for those areas as well. On February 18th, the Plan Commission voted 5-1 with one extension to recommend approval, understanding that the amended proffers addressing issues raised in the staff report would be submitted. The applicant has done that and the proffers were amended to address concerns the commission raised. And as I noted, you have an amended set of proffers before you tonight relative to the 751 units. That concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Skinner?
If you would have the floor computer go back to slide number five. Excuse me. The intersection in the purple, you're going to modify the one lane coming down into there and then come into that intersection you described. The one road that's already there on the southern side of the project, you're going to have them come down to that first intersection. What type of intersection is that? Is that a four-way stop? Is it a lit intersection or what? Because...
Well, I can imagine at minimum it would be a three-way stop as the way it's designed without any...
There's four lanes there.
Are you talking at the main entrance or on Telegraph Road?
No, I'm looking at the main entrance. I thought you said you were going to bring them down. Telegraph Road is now... Telegraph Road is now, if you'll show me exactly where Telegraph Road's going to go. That is Telegraph Road, right? Now it's going to go right there into that intersection.
Yes.
Okay, that's four lanes there, I see. So how would it be a three-way?
I'm sorry.
That's the lane I'm referring to. Is that an electronic stoplight there? Is that a four-way stop or...
I think right now it's proposed as a four-way stop. When we get to the site plan, if there was need to be any more than that, then VDOT would recommend that, and our county transportation plans would recommend that as well.
Okay. So ahead, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Trampi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to ask about the bridge over Interstate 95. On the other side of the bridge is a planned, another planned development which has not yet been approved by this board. So I wanted to ask, if it is not approved, if the other development is not approved, is the bridge still useful and desirable?
It is. VDOT is in the process of looking at alternatives, and we've been told that an interchange in this area is not going to happen because of cost. But in our comp plan, we still show an alternate to Route 17 running east and west along that area. So allowing the bridge to come across in this project would allow the connection to a future road paralleling 17 to happen, even if Jacksonville, I mean, the other project does not happen.
Next question. If we took out the 25 acres from the calculation and just the cash proffers and the transportation improvements alone, how would that change the capital facilities impact?
You mean, in terms of, it would certainly reduce their credit amount by 13 million, and I guess is your question, would it reduce whether or not the project would trend positive or not?
Yes.
I don't recall, I don't have that figure in front of me right now.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Got a couple of questions for you. And one, I'm just follow-up on maybe what Mr. Skinner was asking. On slide five, you show Old Telegraph Road coming into an intersection. So it looks like it, where does it intersect with Route One, does it?
No, Old Telegraph Road would no longer intersect with Route One.
Okay, where would it go? And why would we, and who's building it right now? Is it part of this plan?
Telegraph Road exists today in this configuration right here at the angle. So the proposal would be to vacate this portion of Telegraph Road and have Telegraph Road extend project and have citizens come to this intersection and then turn south to get to Route One.
So what is the note for? What is the county intervention at that point? What do we...
Well, the note is just to explain that this will happen as part of the normal vacation process and not as a part of the rezoning case. Not vacate property as a part of the rezoning case. We have to go through the normal vacation process.
So Telegraph Road that exists today, is it going to be improved as part of this project?
It would have to be improved, yes.
By the applicant? And then it'll be rerouted and the other piece will be removed as on a separate issue?
Correct.
At no cost to the county?
Correct.
The second one, the bridge you said that's being proposed wouldn't occur until the 1,500th unit is built. Why so late into the project? When is the road going to be built from, I guess, the four-lane divided road from Route One all the way to where the bridge might be? When is that built during this project?
That gets built as their project gets built. Right now, the bridge is not needed because there's no where for it to go.
Right.
So it would come along that, we figured the 1,500th unit, by that point, there may be development on the other side, and would certainly, you know, be at that point.
Right, so according to this rough plan, when do you anticipate getting the 1,500th, 1,500th unit built? Is there a approximate?
No, that's purely market-driven.
We can, we'll ask that when it comes up. And then I noticed on your other, you talked about school students on the chart. So there's going to be 500 and some new students based on this project?
Correct.
So we need to have to redistrict kids or build a new school?
Well, that total 500 is across elementary, middle, and high school.
Yeah, correct.
So, yes, I mean, redistricting is probably an option on the table now because Massaponix High School is at capacity now.
So we'd either need to build additional capacity or move students if this was at full build-out. So you'd have time to do that. So when you talked about some of the intersections failing around Route One, most of the stuff getting towards 95 and... What is the impact? I guess, have you run the analysis based on assuming the super ramp and everything was built out fully? What would the impact of this project be? Does it still failing? Does the work that this project puts forward help with the overall traffic flow? Are we still broken when the full super ramp's built out? Or is it not enough at this point when you put these...
Well, the full build-out of the super ramp would certainly help and would reduce the impact that this project would have on those intersections.
Would they still be failing, I guess? Or would they be raided?
It may be an acceptable level at that point. I mean, I think that is the intent of the super ramp is try to reduce the impact on Route One so that those intersections can get to an acceptable level.
Right, and that was really kind of based on where we are today and trying to fix what the situation is today. Adding this development, and as I think Mr. Trampi mentioned, there's another large proposal on the other side, how does it overall impact the work, the efforts going on? Is that super ramp effort enough to support these projects?
The super ramp project, in addition to the road network that the other project may build, with the potential of the construction of Spotsylvania Avenue extension, all those components together help to alleviate the impacts on Route One.
At some point, could you get an analysis that runs, that shows the full build-out of the super ramp, the Spotsylvania Avenue connection with the bridge and all that, and show what the impact would look like then?
I believe that is part of what VDOT is working on right now.
And when should we get that? Or when will we know that?
I was told today in the middle of May that they were anticipating doing a presentation to the Transportation Committee on the 12th.
Somewhere on the 12th, we might know the full impact of both developments as well as the Spotsylvania Avenue and...
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I just had one. The current zoning is industrial, and does the rezoning reduce the number of car trips?
It could, because our industrial zoning is a pretty wide-open zoning classification. There are a number of commercial uses there, so it certainly could, yes. There's certainly less commercial space in this project, I think, that could be done under the industrial zoning. So you would have a reduction in traffic.
The worst-case scenario, and I say that only on the transportation clogging side of it, not actually bringing business in, is that as it's zoned currently, we actually could have more traffic than if it were to be rezoned.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? The applicant? Come forward, please. You have 10 minutes.
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Paints Law from Hurst &amp; Fleischer, and we represent the applicant. I will try to get through my comments as quickly as possible. Obviously, this is a fairly large, dynamic project, and many, many details I'd like to address in some of the questions that came up. First, I guess, the number-one sort of always big pressing issue is growth. This project obviously is within the county's high-growth area in its primary settlement districts, so growth and mixed use is encouraged under your comprehensive plan. So when the county designates its future planning as to where growth would go and be concentrated, this is the area. Our plan, like the county's, is long-term, so this project, we're expecting a 10 to 15, perhaps even longer, build-out. I think if you take into consideration what the county's growth rate has been certainly since the Great Recession and after sequestration impacts, I think last year you grew about 0.9%. Typical growth patterns are about 2%. And also, there were only issued about 457 new residential housing permits. So there's not, despite some of the criticism about approved projects, there has not been extraordinary growth in the county. Again, this is consistent with other patterns of sequestration impacts. And as we know, anemic growth impacts our commercial tax base. It also impacts our commercial investors that are in our community. This also project will also improve what is somewhat of a low-investment area, somewhat blighted as some would argue, in this particular part of Route One. We think this investment will encourage other investment around us and further south. This project is a downzoning. Our traffic impact analysis shows that by right, we would generate 40% more traffic from this location without having to pay $1 in proffers or to make any significant improvement, infrastructure improvements, other than entrance improvements into our site. We would add 11,586 trips to the 241 acres. That's important to note. So we're not adding to the problem with this project. We're actually reducing the impact. Economic development, which is extraordinarily important to all of us in this region, as staff's model has shown, it'll be a $1.6 million annual positive net return. Our model showed a little more conservative number than that, about 729,000, and that's with or without a dedication of land. As you, sure you know and can obviously understand, if we weren't dedicating that land, we could possibly rezon that land. And from what I can tell in our analysis, that land is fairly developable, fairly flat, no RPAs or wetland areas within it. You could probably get about another 800 units out of that site. So again, we think that that also is reducing the impact. This project will facilitate, from an economic development perspective, Cosner's Corner, without a doubt. Since we've applied for this zoning application, the county has lost Staples, Best Buy, Radio Shack, Mimi's Glory Days. And I understand that there are other commercial enterprises within that development that are struggling. This project will also benefit and support Spotsylvania Regional Medical Center. It obviously invested and moved to this county because of the growth, of the positive growth that's occurring. Positive growth is good for the hospital, attracts doctors and professionals. Certainly a pillar, an economic pillar in this community. Same with Germana. Germana is a community college depends on local growth to maintain and support its students and its economic development. This project will include, pursuant to our fiscal impact analysis, $800 million investment over time, create 5,100 new construction jobs, 906 permanent jobs at full build-out. We have Dr. Fuller here from George Mason University. If you have any questions about him, or perhaps on rebuttal, he may make some comments. There are $7.175 million in cash proffers. Roads to be utilized for roads, schools, and allocated $1 million for a new animal shelter project that you're proposing. There's $549,000 in new utilities in that location that don't just benefit this project, that benefit properties around us. I know there's been some discussion about utility investment in that particular area. There is a public dedication of land, 25 acres. We have an appraisal that shows it, that provides it at 16 million. We've only proffered 13 million of that. This could be used, obviously, for expanding the bridge area, certainly as growth occurs, certainly from a corporate perspective, and attracting a large employer to that location or to the east. You could utilize it for park-and-ride facilities. I noticed that was a comment in the staff report, VRE support, a school, an entertainment venue. I've heard discussions about potential baseball in Spotsylvania County, that would be a great location for it. Utilities and, of course, the animal shelter. Staff has covered pretty detail the transportation improvements. Again, this is a downzoning of 40% traffic that could occur by right without having to put $1 in proffers on the table. Will provide $5 million in in-kind transportation improvements. 2.1 along Route One, in which there would be not only additional lanes but additional turn lanes, constructed four different entrances along Route One, a full light intersection at one is our main access point, realigning Old Telegraph Road, which some of the community came to speak at the last public hearing who were very concerned about how dangerous it is today. These improvements that we would pay for could help them as well and also benefit their properties. In addition to that, this project includes a four-lane parkway to connect to the future bridge. The bridge was not our initial plan. The initial plan was to connect to the Jackson Gateway Interchange, which halfway through our development or through our application process was taken off the table by VDOT because it wasn't affordable. So what we did quickly was we shifted in regards to helping to mitigate the question that Mr. McLaughlin asked, how do you help mitigate the traffic to keep it away from Massaponix Interchange, keep it away from 1 and 17? This bridge will do it. It will connect to a future transportation grid on the east side with or without Alexander's Crossing. It's in the county's future transportation plan to have a parkway to connect to Massaponix, connect to Cosner's Drive, to eventually to 17, to avoid the whole interchange-intersection connection, and to avoid the Route One and 17 connection, and to connect Spotsylvania Parkway, and by the way, to connect the Hospital Boulevard, which will assist, obviously, Cosner's East, which includes the hospital. This is, and schools, I'm sorry, for schools, there is $5 million available for schools. It's up to discretion of the county in whether to apply that cash to roads, schools, or other. Our understanding from what we're watching in the CIP process with the school system, they're not planning to build a new school anytime soon in Spotsylvania County. In fact, not till maybe 2025 or 2028, even with the future proposed growth that's on the table. So we believe that this project with 500-plus kids over a 10-, 15-, 20-year lifespan is not going to have an adverse impact on schools, and there is obviously cash profit for that perspective. Town center concept, this project is unique. I think it's really your first town center concept that's been presented. Not only are the units in a town center environment, apartments, townhouses, healthcare, condos, encouraging homeownership, first-year homeownership, that's been 298,000 square feet of commercial space, hopefully with a grocery anchor to encourage that neighborhood feel. There's four miles of paths and trails. Want people to feel like they can live, work, play, shop in this environment. Not to mention the fact, they can walk over to Cosner's Corner as well to shop, which I'm sure many of those businesses would appreciate. Why are we attracting, why do we want to attract folks to this site? Who would we attract? Empty nesters. Empty nesters are looking to sell their homes, have less space, be near healthcare facilities, be near shopping, be near places to eat. Millennials, millennials are going to be by 2020 50% of our workforce. I hope they work, but they will be 50% of our workforce, and they don't like to commute. They like to get on the road. They like to stay where they live. We believe we will attract those folks. Phasing, as we, as staff has noted earlier, we have agreed to reduce the phasing concept, our first 25,000 square feet of commercial to be completed within the 700, before we go to the 751st residential unit, whether it's apartment, townhouses, condos, whatever it may be. The stress on that is a reality. The stress on that is, there's already a huge commercial footprint in the area, so we've got to compete against them to attract commercial there, certainly at a footprint of 298,000 square feet. We're also committing a million dollars upfront in transportation proffers. This is before they would normally be due if you were just taking them per unit, and typically you would take them per unit once you get a certificate of occupancy permit issued for that unit or for the apartment building in which they're located. That million dollars is going to be paid basically at the first subdivision approval for any project that we bring to the site. So that's another constraint as to the phasing issue. Again, need to build adequate revenue streams within the project to build the infrastructure. Mr. McLaughlin asked why the 1,500th unit. By then, we think that we would have the infrastructure in place, and also there would be construction on the other side, is obviously we need that to connect. Real quickly, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to close. This is a fiscally positive project, as both our analysis and the staff's confirmed, both for residential and commercial. Commercial doesn't outweigh the other one. Well, the commercial outweighs the other one in regards to tax revenue, but it doesn't pick it up from being negative. It's already positive. This is the only mixed-use project passed in the past several years that I can think of that has this substantive of a proffer package, both in-kind and cash. We believe this project will boost the commercial centers at or near our site. Again, the issue is the lack of adequate rooftops in the area and consumers with disposable incomes that are having impacts at Cosner's Corner. This is detrimental to our tax base, especially if we keep losing commercial businesses. We will lose future investors if that occurs. Project is a downzoning, like I've said, 40% less traffic, and we believe this will be a positive tax revenue and job creator for our county. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your patience. I know some of you are not feeling well. Appreciate your dedication to being here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Trampi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned trying not to compete with Cosner's Corner. When you... When you build out your, the commercial part of this, are you open to non-retail office space?
Well, we are, office space is allowed under the MU5 district, and we actually show office space on our plan. So we're open to office space. This is not going to be a big-box model. This is going to be a completely different model, so we think that we won't be competing with them because we're a different product. But as a neighborhood product, you know, we're going to, we have a captured audience. The first group they're going to want to capture, the folks that are right there, to eat, to go to the grocery store, go to the retail store, et cetera. But we do have an office component because we have a huge healthcare piece on this, on this site.
You mentioned the growth in the county or lack thereof, and I'm sure you've read in the paper, we've already approved a few housing projects. I'm all for competition, and that's good for the consumer if you folks are competing with each other, but I guess my question is, is the market really there for these homes?
The market is there. I think the market's going to be there the next, certainly the next five to seven years. Of course, the real estate market has cycles, it has up and down cycles, you know, interest rates have an impact. Affordable housing is always attractive. And again, who we believe will live there aren't going to be buying large, single-family detached homes. They're going to be wanting to be downsizing, they're going to want to be, again, near shopping where they can walk to, they're going to, again, want to live, work, and play in their environment. They don't want to commute anywhere if they're on the younger end of that scale. So I don't think we're necessarily competing with the same, for the same people. There's not going to be a lot of kids on this site, so it's not going to be necessarily a large group of families. So this is, again, I think this is a different model and a different product that won't compete with that corridor. Now, folks are going to live somewhere else in the county, they may not want to live in that corridor, and they may want to live somewhere else.
So ahead, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin.
You mentioned about the, the 2,200 homes, and again, 385 are healthcare-related, and you talk about the type of folks that are going to live here. There is nothing stating what size, I mean, what are the, I want to say the quality, are they high-end condos, are they high-end townhomes? What are you building? That's the question.
Well, the MU, they're not going to be low-end, it's not going to be low-income housing.
And I ask that question, sorry to interrupt, but I ask that question because Mr. Trampy talked about competition. What I think he doesn't want to see is you drive the market price down because we're competing with, you know, across the street, potentially in the future, or the Walton Development that was approved. So how do you maintain the higher value to keep the tax base up? That make sense?
It does make sense. I mean, it's obviously based on your projected growth. We think there's going to be enough people here to buy the different products. So it's not as if we're, we hope you grow. We don't want you to be anemic forever. It doesn't work for anybody. It doesn't work for the hospitals, it doesn't work for Germana, it doesn't work for anybody, it doesn't work for Cosner's Corner. So we're anticipating the growth, and we think that people are, the baby boomers are going into retirement, that's a huge group of folks, they may very well want to keep their single-family detached homes, most of them live in single, folks who are moving from other areas may very well want to be in downsized housing, and that's, that's the attraction. We've, we've attracted folks we think will build a very quality product within that development, and there's no low-income housing plans whatsoever. It doesn't work for us with the town center at all. Can I answer your question?
Any other questions?
I just had one. There's the financial impact study that was done by you all and then done by the county. And you said that the commercial raises that up, obviously, but is the residential, as it's being phased in, at what point does the residential break even?
Dr. Fuller, do you want to take a shot at that one, or do we know? Because everything's at full buildout, the estimates.
Right.
And if full buildout, everything is positive, but I don't know if we staged it.
Well, and I think also, coupled with that, my question is that, you know, full buildout is 2,200 roughly units, but as we see larger subdivisions in the area, Lee's Park, for example, that has been there for about 13 years, still building. And so my question is, is it a, is it a, you know, five-year, is it, do we, do we break that, that upside-down, that five-year, 10-year, or, I'm sorry, not, not year, but part of the, the buildout as it goes along? At what point do we hit it and it becomes a negative, or not a negative, but a, an equal impact?
The answer, I'm Steve Fuller from George Mason University. The, the three different kinds of housing units that are proposed, each independently supports itself fiscally. They're relatively small units designed to attract one, two, and three-person households, households that are either haven't had their children yet or already have and have sent them to college and moved on. So, so that the, the market that is anticipated by the housing that is proposed allows each unit, each type of unit, the day it's built. Obviously, if the first one has children in it, it's going to be less fiscally attractive than, or positive than, than one that just has a couple in it. Any housing unit that just has one or two adults in it is dramatically fiscally positive. And so it's, it's the loading of the children in there and when they show up that, that could produce a, a unit that doesn't pay its own way. But together, the townhouses and the multifamily units pay their own way.
Thank you.
And just to add on to that, the ripple effect of that is that they being located there benefits the shop, the immediate shopping centers to the north.
Any further questions? Being none, thank you. And I'll declare the public hearing open and ask Amy to read the first name.
The first citizen signed up to speak is Richard Toy, followed by Scott Cleveland.
Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Richard Toy. I live in the Cortlande District. Specifically, I live at 12903 Mill Road. Mr. Chairman, I'm here to ask that you not approve the rezoning request for the proposed Jackson Village development. There are many reasons why the development should be rejected. I will present two of what I consider to be major factors why it should be rejected. First and foremost, approval of rezoning will be tantamount to giving the developer a lifetime by right designation without any guarantees that he can, will, or is able to satisfactorily complete the project at this, complete the project. At this time, you have no idea of the start time, nor do you have any idea of a completion time for this project. All you have, perhaps, is the word of the developer. Mr. Stubber, Chair of the Planning Commission, stated that the buildout may take 20 years. Mr. Payne, attorney for the developer, said Jackson Village is very likely a 15-year project to complete. Neither of these gentlemen are seers. And, including the developer, no one knows how long buildout will take. Mr. Payne has pointed out that, one, Jackson Village will include 298,000 square feet of commercial space. Two, Jackson Village at full buildout will yield a net annual tax revenue surplus of approximately $1.6 million. Three, Jackson Village will invest 810.7 million to Spotsylvania's economy and support 4,768 to 5,187 jobs. These things sound wonderful. However, the devil is in the details. The developer has decreed that commercial space will not be started until after approximately 1,500 homes are built. No one knows what will happen. Two, no one at this time can accurately determine that there will be a net annual tax revenue surplus 15 to 20 years in the future. The claim that Jackson Village will support 4,678 to 5,187 jobs is a crapshoot and at best debatable. It further begs the question of what kind of jobs. Certainly, we do not need more low-paid and minimum-wage jobs. Mr. Chairman, my second reason for rejection of Jackson Village
Mr. Toy, if you can.
Is that the system of rezoning is broken. It needs fixing. You have the opportunity at this time to back off and re-look at your whole process.
Can you please wrap up? Your time is expired, sir.
Yes. A proper revision that will assure that this county is in charge of its land use policies at all times and that its taxpayers are protected and shielded from developer overreach. This is not now the case. Once you have approved developer's rezoning requests, Spotsylvania should be calling the shots through the entire process and not the developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Cleveland, followed by Kathy Danielson.
My name is Scott Cleveland. I have an office over at 420 Hudgens Road. Just wanted to let you know that I'm definitely in favor of Jackson Village. I have numerous business investments throughout the county, and I think this is going to be a definite positive for all of us. Thank you.
Kathy Danielson, followed by Ron Cronister.
Good evening, Kathy Danielson. I both am a residential property owner in the Lee's Hill District, and I'm also owner of industrial property on Corrider Drive, and a real estate agent. And I believe that it is in the best interest of everyone that we continue to help this area of the county recover from the, as he called it, the Great Recession. And it is obvious from what's happening in Cosner's Corner that it is not. Anything that we can do to bring rooftops into this area is going to help that and ultimately benefits all of us from the tax base of the commercial that's already here, the potential commercial development in the already commercial areas. So I would encourage you to go forward with the project. Thanks.
Ron Cronister, followed by Brian Pfeifer.
Hi, my name is Ron Cronister, and I actually have an office very near this project, probably about three miles away from it. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the project. I think it's a great idea. I don't know about the rest of the citizens. I've been a longtime citizen of Spotsylvania County and a small business owner, and I am tired of driving by empty buildings. I mean, we have two Fortune 500 companies in Cosner Corner, Best Buy and Staples, both out of business. That building's been vacant for years. I think that you look at the hospital over there, that really hasn't been utilized to its full capacity yet. And from everything I understand, it seems like it's just lacking households. You need rooftops to support businesses. And right now, there really is a lack in that area. That's probably one of the more, bigger disappointments from a development standpoint, the Cosner Corner area, than probably anything else I could think of in the Fredericksburg area. So, you know, I guess I would implore you to, to consider this project as something that would benefit all of us. Thank you.
Brian Pfeifer, followed by Robert Donovan.
Brian Pfeifer. I live in the Chancellor District. I just want to support the project. I'm looking at businesses closing up shop every day in that area, Route Three, I mean, there's just new businesses that are just not coming to the area. You've got the big companies moving out, which bring in the bigger, the bigger businesses into the area, and as they're moving out, so are the bigger companies that are looking at the area. And the more houses, the more people we have here, the more attractive it is to the other companies to come in and set up shop. So I just want to support the project.
Robert Donovan, followed by John Falk.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Robert Donovan. I live at 10202 Spring Creek Drive, and I'm also a small business owner in Spotsylvania County. I'm here to speak in support of the Jackson Village project, and I'm just going, obviously, the many benefits of the project have already been outlined for the board. The one thing I want to hit upon that anecdotally affects me every day are the jobs. You can argue the number of jobs, but we know that there will be jobs created. I think 5,000 is probably an accurate figure. These jobs are carpenters, electricians, plumbers, HVAC professionals, roofing contractors, flooring companies, engineering companies, survey companies, title companies, mortgage companies, drywall companies, grading and excavating companies, siding companies, insulation companies, cleaning companies, painting companies, appraisal companies, real estate brokerages, advertising companies, appliance suppliers, and building material suppliers, just to name a few. A lot of these jobs are, require specific training and do pay well. I would highly encourage the board to support this project. These are jobs that are sorely needed and will create hundreds of millions of dollars that will go back into the local economy. Thanks for your time.
John Falk, followed by Sandy Schreiber.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Falk. I'm a resident of 5728 West Kessler's Crossing in Lee's Park. I am against the project. I don't feel the proffers they've offered are adequate for the size and the amount of activity that's going to appear. Their indication of the amount of traffic would go down by 17,000 trips a day is ridiculous because we don't have the capacity now to handle the traffic there. According to the newspaper article, the bridge over 95 is to be built later. It's not clear to me that this project pays for that. If they're not, their proffers will not pay for a bridge. The $100,000 that they offered up for the fire department won't even buy a fire truck. It may partially pay for an ambulance. I'm totally against the project. Thank you.
Sandy Schreiber, followed by Frank Brodessen.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Sandy Schreiber. I live in Virginia Heritage Lee's Park. I'm strongly against this Jackson Village development. I'm concerned about traffic on Route One. Traffic is better enough as it is now. I don't think Jackson Village is going to help improve the traffic. Also, they're claiming that they're going to have 298,000 square footage of retail space and office space. Well, if they can't, if they can't lease retail space in Cosner's Corners, how are they going to rent 298,000 square footage of space in Jacksonville, even though there'll be 2,400 families? I don't think that'll be enough to support 298,000 square footage of space. Also, they want to contribute $100,000 towards fire and rescue. That's a pittance of what would need to support fire and rescue. Land alone will be $100,000. What about building the fire department? That's not included. A million dollars towards roads, that's a pittance of what's going to be required to build roads. Therefore, I am strongly against this project, and hopefully you will not support it. Thank you.
Frank Brodessen, followed by Jerry Norval.
Good evening. I'm Frank Brodessen, 5320 West Felipe in the Battlefield District. Let's look at Massaponix, where recent rezoning is creating an apartment-centric core. And South Point Landing, Cosner's East, and Jackson Village will total 2,400 apartments. Is that really the goal? Apartments are sold to investors, and then they're resold, and then they're resold, and then they're resold as time gets better, but inevitably, we have that downturn. Transient residents, residents pick up, move, rents decrease, costs have to be reduced. The absentee owners scream for profits. Pride of ownership is nonexistent, and maintenance virtually disappears. Inevitably, there will be a rental ghetto. All three of those developments were or are being negotiated with reduced or no proffers at all because they pay for themselves with a commercial component, accurate or hypothetical. 1.5 million square feet in Cosner's Corner 1.5 million square feet in Cosner's Corner, 300,000 four blocks away in Lee's Park, 450,000 more in South Point Landing. That's 2,250,000 available commercial space with only about 800,000 actually occupied. Yet, the developer tells us that obscure retailers are clamoring to open in their new 300,000-square-foot commercial component. It's more accurate to say that county retailers will look at the apartment ghetto and say, "No, thanks," and instead, we'll have dollar stores, takeout food, and discount cigarettes. Tonight's developers have proffered 25 acres they have valued at $13 million. In your file, please note what their well-qualified appraiser said. The value opinion is based on a hypothetical condition requested by our client. The appraisal is based on a single hypothetical condition. The major verification is a contract with unknown conditions. It isn't even a sale. This proffer value is grossly inflated. The capital costs will not be paid by a hypothetical value of a hypothetical condition supported by a hypothetical sale plus a hypothetical 30-year, I wrote. Now we hear it's a 15-year payout. I don't believe it. This board knows there's excessive commercial zoning. You know this rezoning request does not meet your new proffer guidelines. You know it does not meet transportation goals. You know it causes overcrowding in area schools. You know it doesn't contribute much to the sheriff. You know it has a very modest contribution for fire protection. You know it will continue to create endless traffic gridlock, slow emergency responses, and require all county taxpayers to fund the necessary new schools and pay the capital costs of growth.
Sir, could you please sum up your time as well, please? Thank you.
Yeah, two seconds. We all know developers negotiate, buyers pay. We all know low proffers include increased developers' profits. So will you vote tonight for the developer, or will you vote for the voter? I respectfully request you reject the hypothetical proffers, the hypothetical payout theory, and negotiate fair and adequate proffers that conform to your newly adopted guidelines. Thank you.
Jerry Norvell, followed by James Hildrop.
I remember my notes this time. Jerry Norvell from the Battlefield District. Heaven help, I cannot even begin to and will not repeat the questions made by Mr. Toy and by Mr. Brodessen and by others tonight, including the developer. What I'd like to propose is that we stop looking at numbers, projections, and hold our hearts a little bit and see what we really think about the numbers. The numbers are important. Everything they said's important, and I imagine everything they said was the truth. Those are gentlemen I both know, and they would not say anything that they didn't believe to be the truth. But I'm asking you tonight to perhaps go along with me for about a minute or two. Number one, how many of you are Rotary members? How do you? Well, I am a Rotary member, was until recently moved here, and Rotary has what's known as a four-way test. And that four-way test applies to business decisions, and business decisions are not all made in the head. They're made on demographics, they're made on a variety of things, but they're also made in how you really feel right here. So if I could ask the board to give this consideration. First, ask yourself not whether the people are being truthful, whether it's developer or otherwise. I have every reason to believe everyone who's spoken is truthful. However, are there truths that will hold in the project itself? Test the truth of the project. Rotary would say, "Is it the truth? Is it the truth?" Secondly, is it fair to all concerned? Folks have a lot of responsibility, as you well know, and there are many, many people who will be affected by this project and all of the outcroppings of that. And so ask yourself what you see before you in paper when you distill it in your head and put it in your heart, really fair to all concerned, as fair as we can make it to all concerned. Rotary also talks about goodwill and friendship, and I won't get into that tonight. That's a thing among people, so I'll skip that aspect of their four-way test. Their final test is this. Is the project or is this decision beneficial to all concerned? All concerned. That means all these people, folks who have the sometimes very, very difficult job of making decisions about the county and its money and so on.
Sir-
I'm asking you that you ask if it's beneficial and if you feel that the truth will be seen and heard in the end of this project, and I'll make no further comments because all the others, in my judgment, have done a very good job of presenting you with the feelings of the community. Thank you.
James Hildrop, followed by Barbara Shell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jimmy Hildrop. We're sort of newcomers to Spotsylvania. We own the farm over where Wilderness Elementary is, came off. We've only been here since about the 1820s. So my family's always been active. They've always supported Spotsylvania County in what they believed was the very best for the county and not always what was very best for them. We have a large sewer line that goes through the middle of the farm and a big pump station down in the bottom, and sometime, it's a bane of my existence that I have it, but my father worked very hard for it because he thought it was the best thing for Spotsylvania County, not necessarily the best thing for Gordon Hildrop. I like shopping in Spotsylvania County. We drive down to Cosner Corner, South Point. We drive down because we want to spend our money in Lowe's and Walmart. I used to spend it in Best Buy and Staples because the tax money ended up in Spotsylvania County, not the city of Fredericksburg. I've got friends in Fredericksburg, but I don't want to send their kids to school. I want to send my kids to school. I want to help keep my taxes down. They have to take care of theirs. Now, I hear people say, "Well, it's going to cause failure of intersections." Well, maybe this project helps cause failure of intersections, but I also hear that it's going to reduce trips by over 11,000. So maybe if it's a failure of intersections, it's not because of this project. Maybe that failure is less because of this project if it's rezoned, and it can't support everything on the Route 1 corridor. It has support itself. So it's reducing that transportation problem. It is not fixing it. Let's be real. No one project's going to fix it. It doesn't prevent every problem that's down there, but it's going to bring in some commercial work. It's going to bring in some houses, and I would suggest to you that if, from what the gentleman from George Mason's saying, if it's empty nesters and those people, it's not going to be low-income housing. Look at what's selling in Spotsylvania. It's not the mega-million houses, but it's not the 100,000 and the 90,000. People want to live in an affordable, whatever that word is, affordable. It's not bringing in tons of kids, 500 kids across elementary, middle, and high school, and you're not projecting a need for any new school because of this. I hear people say, "Well, gee, it ought to pay for a whole fire station." Great, let's make them pay for a whole fire station if we guarantee them the fire truck won't leave their project. It's part of an overall plan. This county some years ago said, "Let's not the old thing of move, go west, young man." Spotsylvania County said, "Go south, folks. Go down Route 1," and that's where this is. This is where you said you wanted development. It's a reasonable development. It brings money to the county. And Leon, wherever you are, don't take this personal. Oh, he's in front of me. I didn't even notice. But if you're going to say it doesn't pay for itself, fire your staff and get new programs because your programs, your formulas, and your staff says it pays for itself. Thank you.
Barbara Shell, followed by Daniella Ivanova.
I live at Sheridan Hills. I'm not objecting to the development. I'm objecting to the proffers. They will walk away with $33 million of taxpayers' money if you do. They're only offering 7.2 million. That little section of Harrison Road from Plank Road to Harrison Road, it's going to cost $3 million. It's about 1,000 feet. How much is this going to cost in transport? Traffic light costs approximately $300,000.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could you speak into the mic? We can, I cannot hear you at least up here. No, ma'am. I cannot. So if you could get close to the mic, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Okay. My point is, the proffers are not enough. The taxpayers are having to pull up what the developers do not pay. This is not fair to the taxpayer. We're in a downsizing economy. We can't afford this. We have to make the developers pay more. My suggestion is, in the beginning, they should pay all of the government and judicial service right up front, the whole proffer, the whole proffer for judicial and government services. Every development uses that. That's a service that's used. Some of the others aren't used, libraries, some other things. They're not used, okay? They went to healthcare units. They're not in healthcare units. They don't want to pay any proffer for them. Those people don't use any services? Excuse me. I'm a senior citizen. I want a fire department or a rescue squad whenever I call for one. They don't want to pay any proffer for it. This is ridiculous. Okay. When? Tell me when a developer has not paid or has paid a full proffer. I don't know of any that has paid a full proffer by county guidelines. It's a joke. It's a joke, and the taxpayers are paying your jokes. All right. My question to you, defendant, are you all not wiser than George Washington, who went to school to the age of 14? How about Abraham Lincoln, who was self-learned? And Benjamin Franklin started printing when he was 12 years old, and he ran away from home when he was 17? How much of an education these people have? We need responsible financial decisions made by this Board of Supervisors.
Daniella Ivanova, followed by Glenn Flippo.
My name is Daniella Ivanova, and I live on 9138 Old- and I want to support the Jackson Village. I am a small business owner, and I think it's going to be benefit for my business. And I like to, when I open the door in the morning, to see a nice park and my paved road and all the benefits we can have from the project, so I definitely support the project.
Glenn Flippo, followed by Nicole Ivanova.
My name is Glenn Flippo, and I'm a manager for AAA Cleaning, which is owned by Daniella and Nikolai Ivanov. We all reside on the property that you all were talking about. I understand there's a lot of pros and a lot of cons to this, but the problem is, the property is kind of useless the way it is. It's kind of a mess, and it really needs to be cleaned up. And the transportation problem, it's always been a problem in that area. I've lived there, not in that particular property, but I've lived in that area for all my life, and I know exactly what they're talking about with transportation. But like the other gentleman said, he was right. You're going to have transportation problems no matter what you do. But there is a good possibility that this is going to bring good competition for the small business people because most of them, we clean a lot of those businesses that they're talking about in Cosner's Corner and everything, and their main complaint is rent. The rent is astronomical, so they need a little competition in this field. I think it would be a good thing if they had this opportunity to have more small businesses and everything there. We need the business too, so we're really for it. And even residing on the property, we know we're going to have to relocate, but that's okay too. We've already made arrangements for that, and I think it would be very beneficial to the county. That's all we had to say. Thank you.
Nikolay Ivanov, followed by Christopher Engstad.
9138 Old Telegraph Road. One road through the dust, and one big hole there that property is something ugly. I'd be happy somebody changed everything, good houses, more business for the people in that property. I support the project. Thank you.
Christopher Engstad, followed by Alicia Engstad.
I'm Christopher Engstad. I reside in Spotsylvania County and have two real estate offices in the county also. I feel like this project would be a great benefit to the county for the fact of the construction. Being in that industry, we certainly have subs that are really struggling to find work. I'm contacted daily from folks who are good at what they do. You know, they're Class A contractors. They can't seem to find a job, just like Robert Donovan stated. Each one of them, drywall, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, there's just not enough jobs around here. So these folks are unemployed, or they're working subs, sub jobs. They have a job for a day or two, and then they have nothing to do for the next two weeks. So I believe with the construction that will go on to this project, the money that'll be put back into the county and reinvested. Cosner's Corner obviously is underperforming where it should have been originally, and I believe that this project will give it enough competition to hopefully bring down some of those rental rates and in turn, you know, fill the empty spaces. So I'm definitely in favor of Jackson Village project and ask for your approval. Thank you.
Alicia Engstad, followed by Jonathan Powell.
Hello, I'm Alicia Engstad, 39, Carrington Lane in Spotsylvania County. I am a small business owner. I'm a real estate broker in the area, and I am here in favor of the Jackson Village development. Being in real estate as a broker, I do feel that we do need more housing in this area. As crazy as it sounds, we do have a lot of business. We do have a lot of people coming to the area. They're looking at this area, and they're turning away because they do see the empty buildings. They're not going to come to Cosner's Corner if they don't see any further development. They're going to say, "Oh, that's a dead area. I'm going to move elsewhere." I think it's very important to have other companies come in here and look at the area other than what these developers have already put in in every single cookie-cutter development that they've put in. I think that having another development that has multi-use with family housing is going to bring the good people to the area that we need. Otherwise, they're just going to continue to purchase in Richmond. They're going to bypass us and go to Northern Virginia. 63% of the purchasers in Stafford County purchase with VA loans. Most of the loans in Spotsylvania County are conventional. I do think that a lot of the military will move to this area. They do sell about every three years. I think that helps stimulate the economy in the area. I'm very much in favor for this in every which way, shape, and form, so thank you.
Jonathan Powell, followed by John Flynn.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Powell. I'm a local business owner, small business owner, and I support the project because I think it's going to actually help in several ways. I don't think it's going to solve all the problems, and I know some people will not be happy about it, but I don't think any one project would solve all the problems and make everybody happy. I think it does a lot more good than bad, so for that reason, I support it. Thank you.
John Flynn, followed by Alan Tattersall.
My name is John Flynn. I live at Saul's Point Drive here in Virginia Heritage. I'm against the project. First of all, I think many of the applicants in all of these projects give the most rosiest estimation of what the future holds. We don't even know what tomorrow's weather is, but we can tell what the next 15 years will be somehow. And somehow- And somehow, the board here is unfortunately required to pass on judgment on these projects. My main concern is quality of life here for residents of Spotsylvania County, particularly with schools, and also with traffic. Something that hasn't been mentioned here is the traffic on US-1 as it relates to traffic on 95. 95 is a horror show, but so can US-1 be a horror show, because it's an alternative to traffic on 95. Last Sunday, 3 o'clock, I'm heading north on US-1, and it's just bumper to bumper because 95 is bumper to bumper. This is a Sunday. Now, nowhere are traffic estimates figured in for these, these likelihoods, and they occur on a regular basis. Pretty much every Sunday, 95 is backed up here in the Frederickburg area, backed up well several miles north there, and these are our concerns. We talk about schools, I mean, the project proposes a certain number of additional students in the schools for grammar school, or elementary school, middle school, and high school. The high school is already over capacity. Massaponix High School is over capacity now. We're going to add more children. The elementary schools and the, the middle schools will be over capacity with the numbers of students proposed for this project. It's the quality of life here for all the citizens. I realize developers have their possibility of seeking additional revenues through zone changes throughout the community, and that's fine, but the quality of life for everybody in Spotsylvania, Spotsylvania County is affected. I have a, my daughter and son-in-law are planning to leave Spotsylvania County, and it's precisely because of traffic, especially on Route 3. These are the concerns that I have, so, it's just, I request your permission to seek your denial of this application. Thank you.
Alan Tattersall, followed by Tim Brown.
Good evening, my name is Alan Tattersall, I reside in the Battlefield District. I just want to speak to one particular point, it's been covered before, but I understand the need for growth, I understand the need that you have to bring revenue into the county. However, I don't believe the current residents need to provide the investment to get that to happen. If you look at the cash proffers that have been offered by the developer, there's a net deficit including of $4 million to what the county policy says it should be, and that includes a $13 million hypothetical investment. That points noted both in the, in the Planning Commission staff reports, in the minutes of the planning committee meeting, and again, in the report that was provided this, this evening. And it can be demonstrated by the fact that we continue to authorize bond, bond issues in order to cover for capital improvements, because they weren't funded previously on, based on the county's growth. So I think you need to renegotiate with the developer. I understand the need for development and, and increased capacity, homeowner, both commercial and residential, but I don't agree that we need to pay for it.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak.
Thank you. Anybody here who didn't speak, wish to come forward and speak? Please come forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Mary Lou Collier, Mr. Skinner's district. I've got a rubber band here, you can only stretch it so far. Let's take, for instance, the budget. We were pulling eye teeth to get a budget approved this year. Past years it's been difficult, but we kept stretching that rubber band. Where are we going to get the money for the schools, transportation, fire, rescue, police, our social services, all of the other services that are needed for the county citizens? Ouch! That's birth pain, more people coming in. Transportation. When there's an overflow of traffic on 95, accident, they, they come on Route 1. Have you been through Cosner's Corner? Route 1 all the way through into the town, when it's bumper to bumper? Route 1 is used as, as the alternative motive to get somewhere? Ouch! Transportation problems. Two, about transportation, a bridge that is supposed to be a bridge to alleviate traffic to go back and forth? Well, you know, you've got a hospital, how are you going to get to that hospital when you've got traffic clogged? And when would this bridge be built? It's only projections, or I believe, or maybe, or this. Ouch! Growth pain. We have problems with fire and rescue. The building of Fire Rescue 11 is forthcoming, but to get an ambulance, to get where you need on a timely basis and you're stuck in traffic, you're going to have to not have ambulances, you're going to have to have vehicles that have propellers and be like a helicopter, metal helicopter, get from place to place. That's the only way to go. Ouch! Growth. So many problems associated with growth, and I know you can't stop growth, but there is such a thing as responsible growth. And in this particular project, I've hear so many may, maybe, or I believe, or assumptions. I think you need to remember that there's so many issues that has to be thought of and addressed, and it's too many assumptions. I'm very wary of not knowing, just like the parks. Oh, we need park recreation. Who's paying for the operation of that park? I believe it's going to be the county, it's not the developer. Or, or, it's going to be the HOA. Oh, no, no, I don't know who it's going to do. Well, we're going to have a park without anybody maintaining it? Ouch! Growth pain. Just, I don't feel comfortable about this, and I think that either hit the no button, or hit the pause button, because remember, the time to build an ark is before the storm, not during the storm, and you need, there's too many issues you need to resolve first before you hit the yes button. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Rand Somborak, and I reside at 3706 Little River Drive in the Lee Hill District. And in, in a similar period, about 15 years ago, growth was a big issue in this county. Several stakeholders, about 72 of us got together, and we gathered for a smart growth exercise. And these stakeholders came from the Frederickburg Chamber of Commerce, the Frederickburg Area Association of Realtors, Frederickburg Area Builders Association, and select Planning District 16 county supervisors. Jackson Village is the exact model that came out of this exercise. It, it's in compliance with the comp plan, it's compact, it provides jobs, it has green space, it has a healthy mix of housing types, it has adequate proffers, it has affordable housing component that this county truly needs. Please approve Jackson Village.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Plaxico. I don't have a volume of things to say, and the things that I want to say have, are my conclusions from listening to all the speakers, things I didn't know. I guess I thought that Jackson Village was being posited as a solution for some of our problems. And one of the problems is that Cosner's Corner has a lot of empty buildings. And then I think I heard a realtor say that, you know, people don't want to live here because they see the empty buildings and there's not a good choice of homes. But maybe it, Jackson Village is not the solution. Maybe the solution is in things that other people brought up, and some people brought up the traffic. And I think if I were coming here to see homes from Northern Virginia where I used to live, and I, I saw the kind of traffic that we have now coming off of 95, I would have thought twice about moving here. And then, the other thing is, the empty space at Cosner's Corner, someone said that the people are complaining about the high rents there. Well, maybe that's the reason Cosner's Corner has so many empty spaces. And maybe there's something you can do about the traffic, and, and I don't suppose there's anything you can do about the rent. But this makes me think that maybe Jackson Village, although it has a lot of nice features, is, is not a good thing to do right now.
Thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak? Anybody rise?
Applicant has, not finished the rebuttal.
Okay. Applicant, I'm, I apologize.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you're tired of listening to me. Charlie Payne, the law firm, Herschel Flyer, trying to represent the applicant. It never fails in all the public hearings that I, that I go to, I always learn something new, and I always appreciate the comments, those for and against, I think you've heard a fairly good mix of that. That participation is extraordinarily important to our democratic system and our process and our public hearing process, and I respect the opinions of all of those persons, including those who are against. I will say this, I'm staying away from the rubber band, though. No rubber band in my future presentations, I assure you. I, I, it seems painful. I think it's important to reiterate a few things. One, the proffer, the current proffer guidelines, as staff has confirmed, our project is consistent with, both in-con and cash. I think we get a disconnect that if it's not all cash, somehow it doesn't pay for itself. Infrastructure that we are providing, the dedications that we are making benefit the county, not unlike Lee's Park and their in-con proffer for a new road, not like, unlike South Point 2 for their in-con proffer for a new road to 208. The parkway that's being built on our site wasn't planned, it happened because the interchange disappeared, and we had to find a way to mitigate traffic not just from our site, but in the whole corridor. So, we're inviting additional traffic to our site. We've got a four-lane parkway where we're actually inviting traffic to our site, why? Not just for our benefit, but to help mitigate the impacts on the Route 1 corridor, to get people away from Route 1 and 17 intersection, to get them away from the Massaponix interchange if they don't have to go in that direction. I don't like any other projects that have been before you in that corridor, so I think that's important to note. And those are significant in-con and cash proffers we shouldn't ignore. The bridge will be in place when the impacts occur, certainly on our site. We've got to be able to afford to build it, we proffer, we build those transportation improvements, we've got cash for the bridge. And it ties into your grid network on the east side, that's, I think, a very, very important benefit to the county in this corridor, especially when we lose the interchange. It's huge, in my opinion, this is a huge win for the county in that regard. Growth? Any speakers in support have said growth is going to happen, and this is where it's planned. We've planned it that way. We don't get credit for taking people off the roads, you know, when you create a talent center environment, you want to, the point is to keep people on the environment, not to put them on the road. We don't get credit for that, but that's the concept, and it's one, I think, that will benefit the county in the long term. Retailers, someone has said, boy, the retailers are probably not scrambling. The retailers at Cosner's Corner are scrambling. The economic pillars at Germana and the hospital are worried. Growth has got to occur to sustain those pillars. And retailers and restaurants and grocery stores are watching us, they want to see how we're going to grow, how we're going to plan that process. Jackson Village moves you in that right direction. And regardless to the proffers as well, there are some proposed proffers that are on the table. I never, I haven't heard anyone say tonight, by the way, that we exceed those proposed proffers, which this board hasn't approved, Planning Commission has approved, about seven or eight million. I think that's important to note. The economics of this project, I know we've talked about it a lot, it's a reality, the economics of this project not only benefit on-site from a fiscal impact perspective for the county, tax revenue perspective, but also off-site. It has a very positive ripple effect for the county. And I think that we have built the interparcial relationship between our project to, to, not only to the north and to the east, but also creating this, this interrelationship between Cosner's Corner and our site. Our goal to feed Cosner's Corner at the end of the day, it's a win for everybody. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions that you and other board members may have. Again, we've got Dr. Fuller here, we've got our transportation consultant here, our civil engineer here, and of course, the principals are here as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Skinner?
I have no question, Charlie. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, just a, a quick one, there was a comment about delayed development, there should be no impact to the county if the development takes 15 years.
That's right.
I mean, it's really more of an impact.
The longer it's spread out, the less the impact.
Yeah. Okay, I want to, I want to make sure I'm not missing something if it's...
It's our anticipation is based on the current growth rate.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no questions, Charlie, you can sit down. Thank you, sir. You know, there are a few things I want to say too. Transportation issue is obviously a very important thing in this county, okay? But when you don't get the support from the state or the federal government that we need, we have to think out of the box. That's why a development like this helps us, because those bridges can be built over 95. We know that the interchange is no longer really in the plans to do that. And this is just one way that we think out of the box and we get traffic, and this is not just only traffic to Route 17, okay? To divert traffic over through this project, over maybe say through whatever the next one by Walton Homes may bring to us to connect to 17, but that also gives us an opportunity to come back with a new transportation issue that takes 17 over to the Capital One buildings, which has been in the plans for many years. But the problem is, we don't have any state funding to do that. So this is why we need, and yes, it's beneficial to not only the applicant, but it does have benefits to this county, all right? And be honest with you, with the way the schools are, are done this, and being on the school board myself, we do need a realignment. This is the real growth area when you look at it. So we do need the school board to look about how they're going to realign it, because this is the only place I think we can really grow, between Berkeley and, and Lee's Hill District. So we do have to think out of the box. I think this is a good thing for the county, and I would like, and the reason I'm going to table this, I'd like to table it for at least two weeks, because I believe, you see that we're missing a supervisor? Yeah, I'll, I'll continue the public hearing, but we'd like to table it for two weeks, so that Mr. Sebula can be here, because I think even though it's in my district, a lot of traffic, transportation issues are among ourselves. Him and I deal with this all the time. So, my motion would be to table it for two weeks, and then go ahead and keep the public hearing open, and if any of the supervisors need more answers or more questions or stuff, this allows you to do that. And I would hope that by, in two weeks, any question by the supervisors could be answered, and we could come back and vote on it in the first meeting of May.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Thank you, Mr. Skinner. There's a motion on the floor to table until the first meeting in May. Any discussion?
That would be to actually continue the public hearing till May.
To continue the public hearing until May. Yes, sir. The lawyer. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, one quick one. I think, Leon, you said that the VDOT report was due back the first week in May?
Mid-May, the 12th.
When is this meeting, the hearing?
It'd be May 12th.
Same day.
Unless you do it the May 26 meeting, yeah.
What I can, what we can do, I would, if that's a concern, let's see when the report comes out. I mean, if the report comes out after the meeting, we might have to table it for another two weeks. But I'd like to set the, I'd like to set at least a start here. I mean, this project has gone on and on and on. And there's got to be some time that the applicant will know whether it's approved or not. We don't need to keep going on and on with it.
Mr. Pan?
I don't mean to interrupt. I just have a question. Typically, when, tabling is fine with us, but typically you don't leave the public hearing open unless you have proffer changes, which we... So, we're okay with tabling. We just have the question about keeping the public hearing open.
Keeping it open for potential proffer changes, is that your intention?
Certainly continue the public hearing. I appreciate the question, but you can certainly continue the public hearing. That's the...
Is that your intention, Mr. Skinner, to keep the public hearing open to, for potential proffer changes?
I would keep it open for my fellow board members. If they think something is not correct here tonight, they can get with the developer and change it. So...
Okay.
That's the only reason I'm doing that, keeping it open. I'm not sure what my fellow board members really want, or if there's questions out there. That's, but I would ask you all, if there are any changes to be happened, let's do it in the next few weeks so that when we come back on May 12, we can pass this or deny it.
Thank you. So, the motion is to continue the public hearing until the first meeting in May. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, so if the report is not out on the traffic impacts with the J-Ramp, are you, is your, are you saying right now that you will wait until that report is out? I think it would have some important information, a key to this decision, or do you...
I believe what you're saying is correct. And if that's an issue with both yourself and Mr. McLaughlin, I'd be happy to leave it open and look at it first, okay? But if that's the one issue we're waiting for, then we just play it. It could be extended, the table could be extended longer, but I'd rather just, it could come out, maybe mid-May could come out 10 May, who knows?
Okay.
And if that's what you'd like to see before you make a decision, that's fine with me, too.
Thank you. Any other questions? And please vote, then. Thank you. Mr. Burns?
Next public hearing, Mr. Chairman, is CA 15-0001 exempt division code amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. CA 15-0001 is an amendment to the subdivision ordinance, specifically the exempt division provisions. And there are four items that this addresses. One is to remove specific references to zoning districts from this section of the subdivision ordinance. The zoning ordinance itself has in it where family divisions and annual divisions are permitted. So, we don't need to repeat that information in the subdivision ordinance. And by removing these zoning districts from the subdivision ordinance, we won't have to keep updating the subdivision ordinance every time the zoning ordinance changes. The second item is related to a state code change, and that is to allow the spouse of an immediate family member to be an authorized recipient of a family division. The third item is to eliminate the scenic buffer requirement. There is a requirement that an area of property along the public roadway remain unchanged. And the intent there was to maintain the rural nature of the county when family subdivisions occur. This is something that's difficult to enforce. We've heard complaints. People can't see their children waiting for the bus. And the area in the front of the property can grow up and become overgrown if you follow this to the letter. So, staff is proposing to simply eliminate that requirement. And then the final item is to add some review and resubmission timelines and deadlines to ensure that these plats move through the process quickly. So, that concludes my presentation. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this with a five to zero vote.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, declare the public hearing open.
There are no citizens signed up to speak.
Anybody here that wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing no one rise, declare the public hearing closed. Any motions from the board?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, next public hearing is public hearing to consider amendments to Spotsylvania County Code, Chapter 19, Division 2, solid waste use charges as authorized on March 24, 2015. I believe Mr. Love Day is here to make that presentation.
Good evening. The utilities public works department is before you tonight to hold a public hearing associated with commercial tipping fees to Livingston landfill. Want to be clear that this does not impact the residential user fees, so nothing in terms of the residential users will be impacted by the public hearing tonight. The proposed changes are being presented based on concerns expressed by the private hauler community over the existing tipping rate structure, which is basically a declining block rate structure, where the more trash you bring in, the cheaper the rate was per ton. Several of the haulers felt this provided a unfair disadvantage to them, I guess, in terms of if you're a startup company or a small business trying to move forward in the waste hauling world. A 30-day comment period was extended to private haulers in the community. We received no comments from the private haulers regarding this proposed amendment change. Following tonight's public hearing, the department recommends adoption of a unified block rate schedule for two waste categories delivered to the landfill. One is municipal solid waste, which is your general trash you produce every day. And the other, and that would be a flat rate of $19 per ton, and then a flat rate of $41 per ton for construction and demolition debris, which is basically if you tore down a house, that's what that material would be, with an implementation date of June 1, 2015. We chose June 1, 2015, implementation date to allow the private haulers to adjust their pricing schedules with their customers so that everybody's in the square footing come June 1. And we're still here to answer the questions we may have on the proposed changes.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you. Clear the public hearing open. Anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Anyone here wish to speak to this issue? Please come forward, sir, and state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Max Johns, and I live at 8218 McClos Lane on the western side of the county. I read the newspapers all the time, and it seems that we're in a price war with the R-Board landfill up there. Everybody's scrambling to try to get their rates lower. I also read that the R-Board landfill has been, you know, almost in a financial crisis to try to figure out what they can do to hold off closure. They've recently adopted some financing mechanisms that they had not wanted to. I fear that we are filling our landfill with out-of-county waste. And what's happening is, we're basically selling our future landfill to the lowest bidder. And at some point in time in the future, when the landfill is full, when you're facing the decision that the folks up in Stafford and the city are with the R-Board landfill, somebody will look back and say, what were we thinking? Why did we sell it to our lowest bidder? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Lucall, you're Mr. Skinner's district. Did I hear you right that you're lowering the fees? Who's absorbing the cost of the maintenance? And like this gentleman said, sooner or later, we're going to be in a more deficit position than a positive position. I don't know why you want to lower. If anything, you want to think about increasing it. And also be careful that the ones that are using are valid people and not unauthorized users. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Brenda Gibbs. I live in Stafford County, 1021 Manning Drive. And as Mr. Johns just spoke, I've been following the happenings with the R-Board and the landfill up there. They've gotten themselves into the position where they can't afford to keep it open. They're looking at different alternatives, even to the point where they're starting to charge the residents to bring their little bit of household trash and CND in there. I just hope that you all keep that in mind when you're making this decision tonight, not to put yourselves in the same position.
Thank you. Anyone else here wish to speak? Seeing no one rise, declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion from the board?
I do have a question. The concern about lowering the fees, it is not going to impact the ability of the landfill, right? It will cover the costs. This is simply that we put it on a scale where the biggest load paid the least amount, and the little guys that are trying to get started paid considerably more. Is that correct?
Yes, pretty much what we're doing is that unified block rate, the $19 a ton, is equivalent to the lowest rate or the highest rate in the tiered structure that we had before, which was basically if you brought us over 1,500 tons during that period of the month, you would get charged $19 a ton for that 1,500 tons. So, basically, we're just making it across the board so that if you bring us MSW, which is municipal solid waste, you get charged at $19 a ton.
And I believe that that's because we do have some startup companies that are trying to get started, and they were at a competitive disadvantage with some of the bigger companies that were out there. I mean, that's what I have heard from constituents, that they're trying to provide competition, but they are at a disadvantage to compete because they're being charged more to deliver their loads because their loads are smaller.
As the general consensus we had heard from multiple small haulers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change.
Right.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, a motion, question, yes, sir. Go ahead.
I know the last time we lowered tipping fees, and it was one of my favorite meetings that we've had. And that brought us an extra, how much per year did we...
We went from making approximately, I would say around about $100,000 a year in revenue at the landfill facility. And right now, we're around 1.9 million in revenue.
Okay. And I, so we've, revenues jumped by about 1.8 million?
That's correct, sir.
And I remember in that conversation, or I think so, that our life expectancy of our current landfills was 35 years at that time?
That was basically of the phase one development. We actually just recently completed an overall facility study, which looked at the entire 738 acres that are out there. And at the current rate, actually above the current rate, right now, we're actually landfilling around 100,000 tons a year. At the rate assumed in the study, which was 130,000 tons a year, we have approximately 150 to 175 years of life out of that property.
Okay.
Once we manage, we move forward. Things can change, but based on the current numbers and our projections...
150 to 175 years of life expectancy. Okay.
To clarify, and I think you answered it, but based on the fee structure, you anticipate the same revenues coming in, no real change, you're just leveling them off?
That's correct. We feel that there'll be, basically what literally you would see changed in MSW would be compensated for with the construction and demolition debris.
So, you see the same revenue, and then you anticipate the same amount of waste coming in, approximately?
Correct.
Okay, so really no net impact is zero.
Basically, from what we're seeing, we feel that, you know, we are taking, you know, as much waste as we can take from Spotsylvania County. Any additional waste we saw coming in would be, look at where that origin's coming from.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is motion on the floor to approve? Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our public hearings tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we have no closed session.
And there's no closed meeting. Is there any new business by the board, Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Chairman, the EDA is currently negotiating an opportunity to bring a minor league baseball team to Spotsylvania County. As part of the negotiations, the stadium would be constructed by the county and funded with lease revenue bonds. The EDA is requesting the board give the county's moral obligation towards the issuance of these bonds. So, therefore, our next step would include a special board meeting to be held next week to publicly discuss the opportunity before any further action is taken. So, I guess my motion would be to move for a meeting next Tuesday to discuss baseball being in Spotsylvania County.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. There's a motion on the floor to advertise for a special meeting for next Tuesday at 6:00 PM for a special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's correct, 6:00 PM.
To discuss this issue.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Ross?
All right. So, I do have a question. Is when, so there's going to be information that's going to be put out to the public for this proposal, correct? And my question would be, when will it all be out there? Because I would like it at least seven days out. And the second, a follow-on question is, why can't we have this at our first meeting in May? Our normal meeting invites having a special meeting.
Well, I will tell you that there's a requirement by minor league baseball to have a letter approved by the 5th of May, okay? Our meeting is until the 12th. And if we do not submit that letter of, or the lease, I should say, if the lease is not approved, okay, by May 5th and given to the, we cannot do that.
I'm sorry, May 7th.
May 7th.
May 7th is the date.
Excuse me. May 7th is the date.
Okay. So, my understanding was the date was the 1st of May?
Well, 1st, and we got behind, so we asked them if they could extend it. And they were able to extend it until the May 7th, because now the owner of the team needs to put a package together by the end of May to give it to minor league baseball.
To my concern, I mean, my preference, again, you didn't answer the second part, was when would all the information be out there? Because I, my understanding is it's not all known at this time. Is that correct?
Mr. Burns?
Let me explain, let me try to explain it then, too. Here's the thing. There are, there's a lot of information that needs to be out there, okay? Not all of it right now is pertaining to the, the lease itself needs to be the one that we'll work on. We also have a construction contract that we would bid. What the lease is right now is what it, the, what's between the EDA and the owner of the stadium, or the owner of the baseball club, okay? That information can be out there at any time now, if you want to ask for it, okay? And people, I mean, we can put it out there. I guess...
I guess here's my point, Mr. Skinner. I, you know, if we were to hold a special meeting seven days from today, I would hope that that, and this is a, my understanding is that we could be obligating Spotsylvania County for quite a sum of money. My preference, I don't like pressure sales. This is a personal preference of mine. If a car salesman tells me this deal is only good for the day, I walk away. It's just the way I am, and this is not my money. It's, and it's a lot more than a car, is my understanding. So, if we can't get that information out there tonight, I would prefer that we go back to baseball and say, hey, the 7th doesn't work with us, let's push it off, and not have a special meeting. But we need some time to digest this information. And I can't really, I'm getting tonight from you that we're not really certain when the lease or the other information will actually be finalized for public consumption or other board members' consumption. Is that, sounds, is that correct?
I think that the lease has been put together. It's been reviewed by the EDA. There were some questions in there. And that lease is, there's going to be a lot of stuff in the lease that's...
lease that's going to be contingent upon us agreeing, such as where the parking is, what the parking's going to be, and that, or even the construction. Everything in that lease is going to be contingent on us, number one, being able to agree on the parking, okay? And number two, number two, the parking's the major issue, the construction, too, of the stadium, okay? We, everything's there with contingencies, and I don't see why you, or we can put the lease out there, it's now public, it's information that anybody can foree, is that correct?
The lease is leased with the EDA, so I'd have to ask the EDA council, and, you know, if I put that out there. So the only, that's the only, that's the main document that needs to be out there, and that has been, and that's being negotiated now, my understanding. I did, Ms. Ross, I did send out a, an analysis to the board that Davenport did based on a particular amount for the stadium, as well as in using tax incremental financing, and that's out, and I have that, and that's a public document.
Right, and I understand that that was sent out a week ago yesterday, and unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to look at that myself.
Okay, but I have that document.
But what I'm asking tonight is, there's a bunch more information out there, and there's unknowns, it sounds like, even now, that we're negotiating with, and I am just not comfortable having less than a week to digest something that's not even known yet. For, for the record, I understand up to forty-two million dollar expense for the county. And so that, that's why I can't support this personally of a special meeting. I would like at least two weeks to digest the information, as well as having it out there for the public to digest for at least two weeks when we're talking about that much money. It could be outvoted.
Well, I think, I think if we don't do it by May seventh, then, and that could be a good strategy, that we don't, we don't get it all. I mean, we have worked over and over with minor league baseball, the owner, we got them to concede to the seventh, and I think we should at least have the meeting on the seventh to go through it. And if there's somebody, because by that time, you have plenty of time to read the lease, okay? And everything, remember, then we have almost two and a half months that we can finalize parking, and we can also finalize the construction, the bid on the construction. And remember this, there's nothing binding to us in this lease that we give them, because all going to be depending on whether or not we can solve, I'm not going to say problems, because it's not, these situations, the concerns that certain people have. And I'm not sure if we went to Major League Baseball, we could probably call right now and find out whether or not they would extend it. I'm, I mean, I guess it's ninety-five percent true that, that they probably won't do it, but if there's a chance, I'll be happy to call someone right now and ask them to extend it to the fourth, the twelfth of May, an extra five days. I'd be happy to do that before we close this out.
If I was buying a car, I'd feel a little bit of pressure here for, for the date. But are you saying then that we can have a meeting, but the actual decision to fund this proposal, which is still being negotiated, will not be made for two and a half months?
Yeah, that's what we're saying. What we need is a lease that is negotiable. The lease that we have now is negotiable and dependent upon parking and construction. So if we go ahead and vote on, let's just say, the seventh, to put our moral obligation, we have not committed anything until we have finalized the parking and the construction to our satisfaction.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask the county attorney, what does that mean?
Yes, sir.
Moral obligation?
Well, a moral obligation, you know, I guess.
I'll speak to the moral ob, he can do that. What the EDA is requesting, Mr. Ross, is they want to issue lease revenue bonds up to forty-three million dollars. And what they're, and the details are all being worked out now. What they're requesting from the board is the morals, the board's moral obligation. What that means, that basically, when they issue the bonds, there will be a revenue streams identified to do it. Part of it would be in a, in a TIF, which is tax incremental funding, but if it's defaulted, the county would come in and pay the difference. That's what the moral obligation is. So it'll be lease revenue, not general obligation bonds. But the moral obligation gives a better interest rate and makes a solvable bond, but it also makes the county, it goes on their debt.
So, so basically, we would be voting to morally obligate the citizens of Spotsylvania County to up to forty-two million dollars a week from today? Or not?
No, because, yes, and the whole package comes to about forty-three million. We're not sure if all forty-three million are going to be needed, because we haven't finalized the parking situation or the construction. You may be giving it, but there are too many, what I'm saying is, there are two or three contingencies out here, that if those contingencies are met, this is all void, no.
I just cannot, in good faith, not having the information out there and not thinking that, that the government should be involved in, in baseball to this limit. I'm more, more, I'd love baseball to be here, I'd love to provide a tax incentive or the other normal business incentives we provide, but I cannot, not even having the information solidified tonight, sign up to, to promote something with a timeline that said, needs a special meeting next week.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Ross, or Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, just real quick, are you, so next Tuesday, you'd be asking for a vote to commit the county to some amount of funding that would be going towards this?
Yes, we would, because the reason we're doing that is that the EDA will have a vote this week, I believe, on Thursday. I canceled that.
They're voting next week, after we vote.
Okay, so.
And is there a, is there a?
There's, there's a sequence of how it's.
Or not a sequence, I mean, is there a bracket? I heard forty-three million to what could be the loan.
Here's what it is. Right now, I'll break it down to twenty-seven point seven million dollars to build the stadium, and the reason for the extra two point seven million dollars is that in the plan, we would not pay any money on the loan for the first two years. Based on the TIF, okay, the third, fourth, and fifth year we have, we would, excuse me, the third and fourth year, we pay interest only, and on the fifth year, there'd be enough in the TIF.
Right, so I, yeah, I read the Davenport study, but it only accounted for, it didn't have the parking issue that's being arisen.
Parking issue is this, we figure that we're going to have to, and since we're getting land donated to us for the stadium, okay? There's other land needed for parking, and that's the situation.
Well, let me ask you, worst case, are they going to be able to run those new numbers based on the worst-case scenario by the next meeting? Davenport. I mean, because you're asking potentially to commit up to forty-three million, so we should have the analysis that says whether it supports it or doesn't support it.
Yes, and we'd have to run the additional, we'd have to, yes, we'd have to include that in the model, which, because that's, that's a nuance to the thing.
But one other, one last question, nothing against our county attorney. Who's representing the county on this?
This is, well, let me, I'm going to jump in, but Jim can jump. This is an EDA.
Okay, EDA. Do they, do they have a?
They have a legal counsel that is representing them that is negotiating the lease. What the EDA wants from the board is a nod from the board for the moral obligation of the county if they move forward in the project. If they don't get the nod for the moral obligation, they probably will not move ahead.
My, I guess the question is, do they have a, somebody that's qualified to negotiate a lease for a baseball field? That's, I mean, is, I mean, there's skill sets in different legal fields, right? And I'm just saying, do we have the right person, or do they have the right person negotiating it on behalf of the county?
Well, there's no lawyer negotiating this on behalf of the county. EDA issue, and I don't, I don't know if, I don't know, I don't know if that's EDA's counsel's specialty or not. I don't, I don't presume to know.
So the TIF, and this is more for Mr. Barnes, I think, the TIF is on property located?
Yeah.
Around the Carvacks and that area. Is that correct?
With everybody's permission, let me just kind of give you the high version of what I know.
And my follow-up, my question really is, we approved that land, that if I think I know where that land is, where I think I know, I'm just thinking because I don't know yet, that we approved a mixed-use.
Yes.
Develop with proffers that included.
Correct.
So would we be double counting, or are we taking away from the proffers provided by our rezoning to mixed use of that same land for the TIF? Because now we're taking the difference of what's, what is, it attacks incremental funding, to what, what is, but haven't they already proffered that on a rezoning?
I'm not sure about that question. I will tell you this, that the TIF was based on the issuance, or the tax incremental financing was based on new, new additional revenue, not any existing revenue, new additional revenue on the issue, and only looking at the current real estate tax that's received from that property for the twenty-seven point seven million that Mr. Skinner alluded to. What's happened since then is there's some parking issues that, that need to be addressed, and that's the other piece of it, that, my understanding is at least, that some type of a parking agreement, which could include possible structured parking, would have to be worked out sometime in the future. That's why I used the number up to forty-three million.
I got you. My, I guess my concern is, I think we need to go back and look at the proffer that was approved when, when this board rezoned this to mixed use, because it almost seems like we're double, we could be double counting if we're using tax incremental funding here.
If I might, Mr., the, the proffer that came from that MU was basically a stoplight and some sidewalks. A lot of that proffer that was done for that property, in my opinion, was done before when the road was already built, and that road is there. The TIF basically is a set aside. We've done it in other places, we do it in Harrison Crossing, we do it in Massaponix. And basically, the board has decided that that money in those two areas should go for the transportation fund. In this regard, the TIF is being used for money above and beyond from a development that's not producing the real estate revenue as it will when it's developed, and taking that new money and putting it towards paying of the, the bond that's necessary to build the stadium and, and the parking perhaps. So as far as if they paid a, a proffer and were double dipping, I'm not sure if that, if we're even talking about the, the same money structure.
I would like that, our decision reviewed, because I think we proffered commercial space that would be built out.
I think Mr. Ross was expecting is, was, were we counting that revenue in the future? It's not a proffer really, but it was a revenue. I believe that's what you're getting at.
I think when we, when we rezoned to mixed use, and part of that rezoning was commercial, we count that commercial space as part of the.
With MU, it's both commercial and residential, it's next, yeah.
Correct. So, so I think part of the proffer that came through that decision was the commercial space of the MU. And so if we're now counting that additional revenue generated from the build-out, but it was already counted as a proffer, would be my concern.
Well, just, so everybody understands, though, up to now, the only thing that I've worked on and Davenport's worked on has been the, the TIF associated with the stadium alone and at the real estate tax rate only. That's the only thing that we have. We have no other models, nothing else that we've included at this time, but it could be.
Thank you. Any, yes, sir.
I was going to say, is, is he going to call? I mean, I'd be interested in.
Do we have some muzak that we could play? Well, there's a motion on the floor right now. Can you withdraw your motion? And we can recess for a few minutes and then get the answers and then come back?
All right, can I just, delay? Okay. I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you. We're in recess for five to 10 minutes. We're back in session. Thank you for your patience. Would you like to state the motion again, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we, we come back on the fifth of May, which is a week from tonight, and discuss all the issues. By that time, everybody will have had the copy of the lease, okay? There are other areas that are being negotiated pertaining to construction and to parking. And this lease, if we pass, will be contingent on the parking and the construction site agreeable to this county and the EDA.
The motion to have a special meeting next Tuesday in this room at six P. M. to discuss this issue.
Yes, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Vote?
Five yes, with Mr. Ross voting no.
Thank you.
I will have the information put on the web by first thing in the morning, and I will send what information I have to the board when we finish here.
Thank you.
And I do have two announcements, if the board has anything, nothing else at this point.
I, just one, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to make sure is that we get the latest copy of the lease that we've discussed, and they have discussed with the owner.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just two announcements. One is.
Well, real quick, sir, I just wanted to encourage everybody who's watching or hears to show up next Tuesday, and, and I would, at that point, if possible, and with the approval of the board, of course, waive the bylaws to allow people to speak so that they can be heard on this issue. So I would encourage everybody to show up. Yes, sir, Mr. Ross.
And my understanding is, all the information that the county has, so not just the lease, but the Davenport study and any other information is going to be posted on the county website tomorrow morning?
Yes, anything that I, the only thing that I'm aware of is the Davenport study, the lease, there's a comparison chart with some other stuff, some other one-sheet stuff, just information. Whatever we have, we'll put it all out, we'll put it under baseball and.
And I also heard there were other leases of comparable counties. I heard that rumor tonight, is that true?
There was a comparable sheet.
Did that go out there?
Yeah, yeah, I did, yeah. So I'll have, I'll put it all out, out there.
Yes, sir, continue, I apologize.
Two announcements. One is, next Thursday, May seventh, at noon, is the National Day of Prayer Observance, Judicial Center Law and Courthouse area, and all are welcome to come. Second announcement would be the State Water Control Board Public Hearing Town Hall on the BioSilence Application Regarding the Synergy Row Permit. That's also Thursday, May seventh, at seven P. M. in the Marshall Center, Community Room eighty-eight oh-two Cordell Road, Spotsylvania. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other new business or announcements from the board? Always looking for a motion to adjourn. And I got it. Thank you. See you next Tuesday.